What you'll be allowed to do is to make laws. When you see something in the road you don't like, you make a law. When you see something on the streets, you make a law. You see somebody wrong somebody, somebody wrongs you, you make a law. First law in Saint Denis, no firearms. That'll be a first law I'm gonna be putting down. There'll be no firearms here in Saint Denis. You can carry a pistol on your holster 'cause you have no choice. But no long rifles in Saint Denis anymore, unless you're a lawman. So throughout the whole town, if you're caught wearing a long rifle, brandishing a pistol, you will be arrested, charged, fined. I say, I'd say we charge them, um, three minutes in the jail and a fifty dollar fine. Wha- what, I mean, now, it's four of us, so the vote could go either way, but it could be a deadlock. So let's go ahead and vote on that now. Do we want two minutes in jail for brandishing a firearm? Or do we want three minutes in jail for brandishing a firearm? I vote three minutes. Who else votes? Alright, we got, okay, we got three votes, so it's automatically voted in. And that's how this city council thing's gonna work. Now, uh, now I could vote in this long rifle thing, but I'm sure everybody's wanting to vote it in. But we can vote it in. Uh, anybody object to having, uh, long rifles in town, say aye. Okay, alright, on to the next one. Uh, he said what? That's long rifles, anything like that. 'Cause there's no guns in the town, that's the point. There ain't no guns in the town. So... So... That's not the same thing. You got, you got, we can't, well, you can't see one eye. You see his whole face, though. Ahhh, that's an excuse. Here, matter, here, matter of fact, stand, stand over there, stand over here towards me, so I can get a good look at you. Come here. Come here. Turn around. Come here. Listen, all I'm doing is taking a picture of you. Alright, so what, what are you, what are you, what are you trying to do here? Do you, do you want to be in the council or not? If you wanna, listen, if you want, listen, if you... Okay, wonderful. Thank you for taking the mask off and cooperating with the city council meeting. Now, now, listen, listen to me. If you keep your mask off during all meetings, there will be no picture taken. Okay, now, like I said, we're gonna go down the line, starting from... We'll start with the Wolfman. Wolfman, give me a law would you like to lay down here in Saint Denis, and we'll vote on it right here. Alright, what about a hanging, or just a ten minute? Alright, uh... So basically, so if we catch you as a gang, you're gonna be locked up for ten minutes. And if you've done a crime, if we catch you doing a murder crime, it'll be hanging. Right? Alright, I, I, I sound good to me, I like it. What about you down there? Alright, so we're all voting it in, wonderful. Alright, sack it. What law you wanting to put? Now, now, wait a minute now, now, hold on, let's do a recap, so I can... So I can, 'cause, 'cause I'm going down here, there's a Saint Denis, Saint Denis Hotel, Saint Denis Bank. I need to make one that says Saint Denis laws, so hold on, be a second. Now what, did I say, no guns? We said max sentence of three minutes, right? Three minutes in jail and... Fifty dollar fine. Alright. And what was your, what was your, what, what was yours again? What, what was yours again? No gang activity? Alright, uh, sack it, over there, roll. Alright, uh, Mr. Burke, what law would you like to lay down here? Alright. Alright, wonderful, alright, well, how about this? Meeting adjourned, alright? Sack it, you wanna go to the, I gotta go to the gun store real quick and change up this shotgun and, and, uh... Matter of fact, I'm just gonna put it on my horse, there's no guns anyway. How'd you open this door? How'd he open this door? I didn't know that, I didn't know that door opened, 'cause then we could probably get up on here. 'Cause you could get up here with the thing, and then that way you wanted to break the window. That's right. I know, right? You can't hear us. Yeah, you can't hear us talking anyway, way over here. Let me see if these doors open, dude. Hold on. Which one? Which one? What? Buy what? You're insulting me right now. Think you need to leave. You need to leave, sir. Trying to buy another man's house, wanna insult another man like that? You have to be shot down. Listen, that house, listen, the Braithwaite Manor's for sale, goodbye. I'm telling you. Oh. After, after being on city council? Alright, well, how about this? We'll have a meeting about it. We'll bring it up at the meeting. This is preposterous. I mean, this is, I mean, this is what it's come to. They're gonna have to hire a sheriff right here. That's the next thing we're gonna do, we're gonna hire some sheriff. We gotta lock a city councilman up, that's what we gotta do. That's right, you right about that, it makes me sick. Somebody need to do something about it. Well... Like I said, I got me a big purchase coming, and it's gonna be tax-free if you get what I'm saying. So, uh... Matter of fact, let's go check it out. Oh! I need to go to the bank, get the deposit. All these dead bodies out here. Who's gonna clean them up? I had them in my sights with my shotgun. But I just didn't wanna cause another mafia feud. Where is the mayor at? He's supposed to be in town. He's supposed to be in town. Let's go check, let's go check on him. Oh, you know what? He died. Oh, Connor's getting executed, come on, let's go watch. Just came into town for a nice hanging, how about that? Where y'all at? Get him to the hanging tree. Get him to the hanging tree. Wha- wha- what happened? What happened? Can't hear Connor talking, everybody hush, let me hear Con- Connor speak his piece now. We need some law and order. Let's get some law and order now. We can't help him, son. Put him down right there, uh, who got's the hangman? Who got's the hangman on their thing? I took mine off, but I can put it back on real quick. Wait, 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 let's hang this man, we don't wanna stab him. Let me hang this man, hold on. Get back up here, boy. Alright, well, let me do it, hold on. I got it, hold on. Alright, where's he at? Alright, sir, you got any last words? You got any last word? You just admitted to about thirty crimes. You just admitted to about thirty crimes, sir. But like I said, may your soul rest in peace. Well, he's down. Go take his bo- go take his body over there to the, uh, to the cemetery. You gotta go put him on your horse. Yeah, I'm glad we made it for the hanging there, Sheriff. Connor, what's your new role? What evidence? Let me go look. It won't let me view it. It won't let me view it. It won't let me view it. Alright.
Bye!